Evening everyone, welcome to the planning and highways committee on this day of twenty fourth November. Just to have keeping rules and hopefully you won't have a fire drill or a fire, but if it does go off, please leave the building away you came in and under no circumstances use the lift. If that area is blocked, use them exit behind you, but be careful as you go down the steps and we'll meet you at the car park. And can I remind everyone to put their mobiles on silent or turn off please? Item one on the agenda, apologies for absence and declaration of substitute members.
Apology from councillor Leslie Worcester and councillor Brant Erfield is substituted for him. And there's also apologies for councillor Alan Latham.
Item two, disclosure of interest, to deal with any disclosure by members of any disclose peculiar interests and interests other than peculiar interests as defined under the Seaford Town Council Code of Conduct and Localism Act two thousand and eleven in relation to matters on the agenda. Councillor.
Chair, there's two items LW sixteen oh nine oh three and LW three 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 six slash CC, just two person test though.
And I just want to say that all members of the British District Council and. Item three, public participation, in accordance to the standing order three and Seaford Town Council policy, members of the public will be entitled to speak on general issues concerning this committee on non-planning application matters at this point. People wishing to speak on planning applications may do so immediately before each planning application. Are you going to speak on Beechlands?
Yeah, well I'd like to, but it's late, isn't it?
Anybody who, if the committee is happy with the standing orders when we get to agenda item.
Six.
Six, and so that members of the public can speak on that agenda item right before. And with members happy that I do that, okay? So other than Beechlands, has any members of the public got to speak on planning matters, you said?
May I speak about Seaton Neighbourhood Plan, is that okay?
Obviously it's not on the agenda, but it does relate to planning, I think probably you'd like to hear the gentleman say something. There is a, I will mention after if there is a workshop on that, the plan next week.
Oh yes, I was aware of that, yes, yes.
Yes, we could have your name and.
Certainly, Nicholas Tippett, Chutes and Rhodes. I was going to speak simply stelling the virtues of the sixth fairway of Seaton Head Golf Course, about how iconic and youthful it is, how ecologically and archeologically varied, how it's all part of the Southown National Park, all of these things of course being true. But then I started a lead team three days ago and oh my goodness, the strength of feeling that is being stirred up has really, really surprised me. I'm assuming that any of you that sit on the, may have got a planning committee, obviously wanted to go through the referendum. My only advice to you is very simple, do not include the sixth fairway of the golf course because it will not go through. Now, I'm fully aware that a lot of referendum or civil referendum across the country have passed. And for example at Ringa, they passed by a margin of eleven to one. But if you look at what they're proposing, even fortunately to Seaton, it was a really small veto and paid full respect to the boundaries of the Southown National Park, unlike what is being proposed in Seaton, which is a totally different magnitude. So it's not just about privileged people such as myself who live well opposite, it's not just about golf club members who are absolutely furious at the idea of their course being churned up to as they see it, pay for the financial inequity of the extension of the clubhouse. And it's not just about dog walkers now, I know eyes can roll at the mention of the word dog walkers, but my goodness me, in this instance, they are numerous, very numerous indeed. And they use, of course, the whole course is public right of way, they use all the fairways of the golf course before work, after work, during the day. On a sunny winter's day, several hundred people including golfers use the course. And on a summer's day, it's into four figures. So as regards Southown National Park Authority itself, I think we all know how red hot they are in terms of planning. So what I'm asking is that common sense for those, thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. As I say, there is a work to open to all public next.
Absolutely, thank you.
As I just said, I mean, there will be no sites released for development without the public, so, so you say. And the main thrust of a neighbourhood plan is to protect green areas rather than to release areas for development. And as I say, there is this, the, the agencies working on the neighbourhood plan on the council's behalf will all be attending the workshop if you like, at the Clintstone Centre on the next Wednesday from four thirty to seven thirty as you say, so I'm sure members will want to attend that to update themselves on what's happening with the neighbourhood plan.
You're very good, I'm sure.
There is various groups, there's the environmental group, housing group. So it's really, we're looking at the public's response, we want, you know, ideas. At the end of the day, we've got to find room for one hundred and eighty five houses by law. So it's getting the general public comments on it and if anybody's got any ideas at the end of it. So yeah, look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. And anybody else? All right, item four, planning applications, weekend ending twenty eighth of October. LW stroke one six stroke oh eight six seven sixty one Colton Road. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Goodwin.
Well, thank you Chair, on studying the plans, I have no objection whatsoever as to this application.
Is that filed seconded? Any other comments? I'd like to show hands of no objection.
Yes, Chair, thank you.
LW stroke one six stroke zero eight nine four twenty one East Albany Road. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Goodwin.
Well, thank you Chair, again on studying the plans, very scrutinising it, I have no objection to this application.
Is that filed seconded? Any other comments? Can I have shown hands of no objection?
No objection, thank you.
LW stroke one six stroke zero eight nine six. Sorry, let's wait till councillor Borman to come back because the public have to be escorted through the police area.
I don't need to order anything, no, I haven't paid with you.
Right, LW stroke one six stroke zero eight nine six Havenfield Cookmere Road. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Hutton.
I thought there was no issue with this really, of such quite large plots of land here, and the remakes go to quite a good standard, so I've got no problem, so I'm happy with that, no issue proposed.
We'll do something, Chair.
Thank you. And can I have shown hands of no objection?
It's carried, no objection.
LW stroke one six strokes zero eight nine eight units one and two, one two three Princess Drive. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Hutton.
Yes, obviously it's part of the Co-op Society rebranding, you're going back from their green to the blue, sort of using the Co-op logo which they used to use quite a few years ago, isn't it now? So they're bringing that back, so they're gradually going through the UK doing this. And it's almost like light for light, it would be basically green, blue replacing green really, yeah. Shade of blue, which you took as well, so I can't see any real problem there. I think they're both eliminated, it's not a new elimination, is it? It's still a remake already, isn't it, and Princess Drive, so it's fine. Basically, this is one eliminated, isn't it?
Yes, that's right, yeah. Councillor Hutton.
I'll propose that it be accepted.
Thank you. And can I have shown hands of objection?
It's carried, no objection, thank you.
Planning applications weekend ending fourth November. LW stroke one six stroke zero eight four nine one Clermont Court Clermont Road. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Hutton.
Interesting, because obviously except at the end of that particular call, and I think it fits well, and they're trying to keep to the same design, but I don't know what other members think around here.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I proposed, I proposed.
You've got that, that's the Borman.
Yeah.
Right, can I have shown hands of no objection? LW stroke one six stroke zero eight six nine ten St Peters Road. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Goodwin.
Well, thank you Chair, again, planning applications seem fine to me, I've got no problem with this, for the love of the God, maybe.
Councillor.
That's next, that's all.
And can I have shown hands of objection please? Planning applications weekend ending fourth November. LW stroke one six stroke zero eight double seven Rose Cottage East Wall Road. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Backfield.
Yes Chair, I think this is, this is an interesting old property, it certainly has a lot of character to it. So it's quite interesting to see a forty three percent pitch and an expeditional, nearly six meters add to the, to the roof line. I think the only comment would be that it's rather a pity that the northern elevation isn't as balanced and as appealing as the southern elevation.
So are you proposing, are you going to object to the proposal from those grounds?
Uh, yeah, it's more of a comment.
Any other comments? Councillor Borman.
Chair, councillor Burfield's thoughts are this Chair, and I would object to the fact that it should be empty so you can keep it with the rest of the house.
Is that filed a seconded?
No, it's seconded, thank you.
So the reason would be that the proposals are being out of, out of, out of keeping with the property and out of character with the area, or what do we, out of keeping with the existing lines of property, basically.
Can, that's, that's the proposal, this side being moved and seconded to.
Yes, so councillor, although it was councillor Burford's suggestion, councillor Borman proposed it. And councillor Terrell. And can I have shown hands?
For the case of the.
Yep, for the objecting on those grounds.
That's three in favour of the, four, sorry, four in favour of the objection.
Those against? One?
So it's carried, two, it's carried for to raise the objection on the detrimental effect on the character of the property.
Two, yeah. Sorry, LW stroke one six stroke zero nine zero three Three Tonne Parade High Street. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Borman.
Great thing to have the local representation in a more common position, and where they are, we are, Chair, so I'd object, and we'd be able to support them.
I'd like to second, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin. Any more comments? And can I have shown hands of no objection?
It's carried, thank you.
LW stroke one six stroke zero nine one four.
Sorry.
Yeah, again, section or sort of thing, yeah, no, you're going to have to sort of. You should have, you should have really, yeah, and that's going to. I mean, it's interesting because my hometown, but even when we did it last time, which is next, it's been ten years now, because of where it is, it's interesting to see what, what they say, where it is to go. Well, this is, it's a temporary, so if, if they came out, if they left, maybe they'd go back on the route of them. It was a temporary, so.
LW stroke one six stroke zero nine one four Six Fell Close. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Borman.
Yeah, and I suppose it no objection to this Chair.
I should have.
Okay, and can I have shown hands of no objection?
Yes, Chair, thank you.
LW stroke one six stroke zero nine one seven one Shep Bay Parade Four Straight. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee.
I was just going to say, without councillor Hutton to.
Councillor Hutton.
Okay, thank you Chair, well, obviously it's similar to Prince of Light really, part of the national initiative from the Coop Society, so I think going again from green back to blue, I don't think it really is going to change the capital too much, other than Broad Street, so. What happened.
Thank you councillor Borman, I can I have shown hands of no objection? Any others? LW stroke one six stroke zero nine two eight twelve Pit Drive. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Goodwin.
Well, thank you Chair, again, I looked at the plans, as you say, lapsed one bit, and I got no objection to this, this application.
Chair, yes, I note that this application was originally approved at the time of no objections, so I would second councillor Goodwin's proposal.
Yes, just, thank you Chair, I mean, obviously it's essentially, it goes up to the boundary, doesn't it, or the school, but I don't really think that's an issue really. It's like there, there's just a gap there at the moment, so there's plenty of space for it, so.
I'd show hands for objection please, any others? LW stroke one six stroke zero nine four five fifty three Princess Drive. Any members of the public like to comment? Open to the committee. Councillor Backfield.
Yes, Madam Chair, although this one was originally approved, on closer inspection of the plans, it's quite, quite a change from the original design of the bungalow. There's a significant increase in the profile of the property, especially on the front elevation. I would suggest it's not in keeping actually with the adjacent properties and could very well therefore be detrimental to the street scene. And it is also interesting to note that in addition to the elevation of, or the addition of a new story on the bungalow and the roof pitch and elevation of the roof, we should also note of course that the whole property is actually elevated from the main road, from the road there anyway. So, you know, the pitch of the roof is quite significant in its impact on the street scene because the property as a whole is much higher than the road. So I would actually suggest we replace the pitch, if I can.
Okay, councillor Burford. Is that filed a seconded? Councillor Borman.
No, just a no quarter, and that's it, Chair.
Any other comments? Councillor Hutton.
Yes, I mean, I even noticed when this is semi-tapped round the corner in a way, but I still, I still feel as though that section of Prince's Drive is put on the bungalows, it's only when you start to get further up the northern side, it starts going more north. Sort of houses, so as we're still in bungalows, I go with what the other councillors have just said, so.
Okay. So is reflecting, not in keeping with neighbouring properties detrimental to the street scene? As.
Yeah, well, I sort of got the word bulky and obtrusive and the fact that the, it's exaggerated by the elevation of the property and so it's out of character with the surrounding area and detrimental to the street scene. I'll, I'll put a reason together with those issues included, thank you.
Thank you. So can I have shown hands of objecting on those grounds? Any others? All right, this is counter-council application. LW stroke triple three six stroke CC Seaford Primary School Wilkes-Linoleum Way. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Goodwin.
Well, thank you Chair, I have no problem with this application at all, I, I have no objection.
Councillor Hutton. And can I have shown hands of no objection? Treeworks. TW stroke one six stroke zero one three four TPO, the coach house, Saxon Lane. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Any body going to lead on this one?
I've set out a sort of summary of the reasons given in the, the Lewis District Council's statement on the tree preservation order. And as I say, the procedure is that it will either be confirmed or it will lapse within six months. But it's a sort of immediate protection, it gives immediate protection to the, to the trees in light of the application to, from the housing group that own the property to reduce these four sigmas, four sigmas at the front of the property.
It's difficult to study, I think, sorry.
Well, it was difficult to follow. Well, yes, I mean, it was set off by an application from the Southern Housing Group to reduce this, these four sigmas, obviously to, I would have thought to provide more light to the property. And the Lewis District Council was so concerned that there was an intention to carry out works which they considered to go beyond what was recommended under that standard, that they used the powers to put an immediate temporary order if you like, a provisional order, onto the trees, which means that, you know, if it's, if there's any breach of it, it's a criminal offence. But the way the procedure works is that the six, the order lasts for six months. During that time there's consultation with the owners and all other parties, including the town council. And if in the light of comments, the district council decides that it doesn't need to continue with that order, it will lapse within six months. But if it can also decide obviously to confirm it as a permanent order at that time, depending on consultations.
Yeah, so if that's correct, then obviously I'd like to be supportive of the district council within this.
So, my second, thank you. And can I have a show of hands of supporting the LDC? Item five. To the committee on proposals by the telecoms, we know three local phone boxes. Consider proposals set up below and make the response to VT. I'd like to make a comment on this and I thought if we could have the red heritage box at Hastings Avenue, maybe recite it on the Seaford and be used for, uh, emerg. uh emergency and um and for the secret lifeguards, especially sort of towards the western end of the seafront, but that can be just a suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
For defibr- defibrillator, emergency equipment.
Yeah, or or uh may maybe uh emergency calls, like to the coast guards, the secret lifeguards and
I see. Mm-hmm.
I think councillor Borden would pass and then
Yeah, thank you Chair, um yeah, so um two of these are actually on on my um east ward, by the Flint, and uh just to note that there's been vandalism of a lot of areas and the warmest stores wasn't, and it's actually um dysfunctional at the moment as well. So we have an issue with that and with the approach by the infomercials and technologies as well, and for some social leaders, I've got heavy feedback. And I would support um that we act as a community wishes to adopt the box itself, that we do have things great idea, great proposal, I've got the second law proposal, that Chair, that Hastings Avenue, you know, to be um reclaimed and to defend and attack, and it's great.
Okay, councillor Hulman.
My view on the red heritage box is not so much, I think it should go to go more more to be given to the museum to be honest, because I think it's going on the seafront, it's gonna be the maintenance, it's gonna be quite, it's gonna really well, it's it's gonna be high maintenance, but the way we went basically gonna be kept, even though I like the idea of it, but I just not sure if that's the right place, if it's meant to be heritage, more more the history side, it could bas- basically go to my town, that's my own view, to to be preserved as a I'm not sure we've got any preserve in the town at the moment anyway, in in the museum there. Have there any?
Yes.
So in that point of view, it could be have one to
Right, but that's two suggestions, but it's a valid suggestion, no?
Yeah, two suggestions, yeah, it's no suggestion, yeah, yeah, it's just a
Councillor. Uh councillor Borden.
As it's just quite, as I said initially Chair, um this is just to um whether we'd like to adopt it, and it's not into the details about where it's going, so so we would like to adopt it for the town if we decide later, later as a council, and where where it goes, I've got plans to get more discussion.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Councillor Borden.
If I may, Chair, and speak about each of these three boxes in question, um I'm also an east ward councillor and I'd agree with councillor Borden of warm stores. Um box is often uh has been vandalised and is currently in operation, uh non-operational, however its um usage may well warrant its preservation and its kind of location. Uh the um uh Hartford Road um box is also adjacent to my own residence, and uh I have to comment that uh it's often vandalised and and unusable as well, so for me to have seen it only used four times in the last twelve months is unsurprising because it's not usable. Um as a modern box, uh it's also um not very aesthetically pleasing, um I I wouldn't necessarily have any objections to to seeing it go either. Um and I would also hi- highly endorse and support um the suggestion of um of uh adopting the heritage box from uh Hastings Avenue, and I think um to place it in a prominent position on the seafront, uh to be used for contacting the coast guard and the emergency services is perhaps an excellent idea. I would also like to endorse that suggestion.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just just to note, sorry, and just to note, this is um quite across country, whereas I'm just saying that it's got these um county, obviously the ins- you know the cost of V T, actually, I haven't noticed in the um I've got five hundred pieces of pieces and like what's going, and obviously that's elected ones, and maybe perhaps there'll be um people free that might find something useful to adopt too later as well. Um as a council, if they're often interested in um amount, and perhaps to 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 staple through them.
There's more heritage funds that are being offered for adoption.
Oh, yeah, okay, I I think that, I mean, that's just, okay, yeah, so, so just be.
And uh can I have a proposal?
There was no
I'll second to what you said, Chair.
So there's a uh you've wish to adopt the uh Hastings Avenue box with the view to it being relocated to the seafront as a
Like uh
emergency lifeguard um um box, but uh no objections to the removal as the other two, so.
So, yeah, but you can't decide what we want for the heritage, you have to just adopt it.
Yeah, yeah, all right, and I'm just, we just mentioned that you want to adopt it for the time being and then surprise them with the the idea later, yeah, right, fine.
But yeah. So I think it's pretty
Yeah. Is it possible? Okay.
Can I come back to it, Chair, yes, I know, I mean I like the idea of getting on the seafront, if it's gonna cost a lot for a lot, you know, it's they're quite old, and if they're gonna be maintained every year, or if more, with the way they're formed in position, I'm not sure what they're
Yes.
Well, for the moment, we we can ask just to adopt it, so so that so that it's preserved, and then and then later on in the process, you know, to decide, I mean, you might decide that the the ramifications are, you know, the
Okay.
Yeah. Adopt it, yeah. Yeah. the implications are too expensive and
Mm.
you might decide eventually to un-adopt it, but for the moment, uh I think you need to need to uh put protection on it and then then discuss the details. Oh, absolutely, yeah. Mm.
Yeah, that is a important question.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Do we have a second to that?
So I'll second what you said, I'm sorry.
That's right, yeah, and I would happy with that, yes.
Yeah.
Right, can I have show of hands of
Yes, I can carry.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Right, I've got item six. Um I must send um standing orders, is the committee agreed on to that?
Yeah.
All agreed?
Yep.
Okay. Uh to consider the implications of the decision to grant uh consent and whether any further representation should be sent to Lewis District Council regarding the re um report on the re recent decision of Lewis District Council to grant consent for various extensions at Beechlands. Any members of the public like to comment on this? Thank you, can I have your name and address please?
Yeah, thank you, I'm from both, um I am flat eight in York Court, which is opposite uh the proposed site, but I actually live in Corksico Row. Um So what I'd really like to say is, I mean, it's very commendable that the contention is um discussing the possibility of making a further representation to the Lewis District Council. Because uh as as you pointed out here, there's a a a lot of very sort of confused and and concerned local residents. And to quite claim this decision could have got through. And it just flabbergasted, to put it mildly, of the logic that it went into the decision. And, okay, everyone's accepting the decision's been made, we missed the opportunity to to the window of opportunity to try and influence that decision. But I think there's a level of concern that that um that that really seafoam council um should for its own sake in the future make a strong representation to to Lewis Council of the concerns. The overall concern is, the decision is one thing, but the process to get to that decision is actually quite flawed. And I won't go to all the details because we sent one of these to to Seafoam Council in in writing or whatever. Um but it was a flawed process and it led, in in many people's opinion, to a flawed decision. And um I'm sort of mindful of of the original discussion here when when Seafoam Town Council originally resolved to object to the proposal. Somebody said, oh, well, you know, what we say to Lewis, they they don't pay a bit of attention anyway. You know, and that in itself is a terrible indictment of 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 the of the system. And I I really feel that it could be beneficial, and I'm a Seafoam resident, I'm born and bred Seafoam, and you know the seafront is a very, very large part of Seafoam's chart and what makes Seafoam what it is. And this is the thin end of the wedge, uh that that will, if not if left unchallenged, will have very unfortunate consequences. And for everybody. And I think that as well as seeking assurances, um you know, that that they won't do it again, or that they'll they'll um you know, stick to the policies which they've approved and endorsed and which have have been agreed by everybody. Um you know, ask for assurance is fine, but that's a little bit like asking the school body to to stop pushing over little kids on the playground, you know what I mean? Unless it's backed up with something, it it's not, you know, I I wouldn't say it's really worth the paper it's missing on. And I would suggest that there's possibly some merit in Seafoam Town Council making an official uh complaint to Lewis District Council as to why this planning decision was the result of a flawed process. So, seek assurances, yes, but backing up with a complaint that the process wasn't like it was compromised, to say the least, with intentional or otherwise, it it doesn't really, it's unclear, but uh
Thank you.
So that's why I had to say.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to read state standing orders, all ready, Bill? Okay. And uh councillor Borden.
Yeah, thank you Chair, um it's just the point of point one there, but it goes against the uh con- the local plan, and and I think that really sums up what it, you know, what it's about, it isn't it, and that we're right, and and right, it's, I don't think you expressed that further, the fact that it's going against that that plan had at all, I think, and and as to why it was placed um against the local plan, you know.
Yeah.
That's all I can say really.
Councillor Borden.
Yeah, my Chair, as as the as the committee's well aware, I'm not a regular member of this committee, um but I I've taken some time to look into this particular application, and I and I think I would agree with the residents' um the residents' feeling, and because we find ourselves in a situation where um a council in this this situation, Lewis District Council, has decided which of its policies to to um uphold and which to ignore, and I think that's dangerous ground for any any public body to start seeking. It's certainly not one that uh um other committees in this council um subscribe to, we've set policies that that more only guidelines, but they're pretty much rules which we like to abide by when setting our decision-making process, so I think I would probably echo the points made by the men for the public there, that, you know, we should probably um reiterate to Lewis District Council that our our original comments are still valid in regards to this application. And that we're also concerned with the points raised in section two of this report, which is that um, you know, uh it's uh it's difficult to understand why um planning committee at this district council would not seek to enforce its own policies. Thank you.
Thank you. And do you have other comments?
Uh just just to mention, the the Mr. Proult made a mention about, you know, making a formal complaint to Lewis District Council, I think, obviously in a situation where um the there's been an officer's report which quite clearly recommends refusal and um the the members go against that, then there's always going to be controversy. The the members who voted in favour of consent, four members, it was minuted, you know, what their reasons were, but those reasons were quite brief, but I think as far as making a formal complaint to Lewis District Council is concerned, members might think that's going a bit too far, as I say, but certainly, I think you're justified in um writing to the council, uh in uh specifically about that policy S F fifteen to encourage the council in saying, you know, despite the fact that it was voted down in this case, it shouldn't be seen as being weakened, and it should still be upheld in appropriate cases, but as far as a formal complaint, which I think Mr. Proult was encouraging you to make, I think that's, if the residents want to make a formal complaint about the process, then then it's open to them to do that. But I think it's more beneficial as a if 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 there's a majority in favour, that is, um of simply writing to the council um regarding the future, if you like, of concern about the future of policy S F fifteen, and emphasizing its importance and hoping that uh and trusting that it will still be enforced just as uh keenly, if you like, as it or as it has been in the past. Is that, okay. No, no, you you say, you say councillor, okay.
That can't, that can't on this one.
It's a bit interesting this one, because because often, obviously, we're not planning authority here, we're not planning authority, so
We're consultees.
They're consultees, that's part of the part of the big process. Lewis District Council, A District Council, they are planning authorities. They've got all the solicitors, they've got all the all the planning officers, all the all the experts effectively. Councilors, I'm not I'm not talking about, I'm talking general senses, no, not this particular one, councillors have an awful lot of information at that level. And sometimes they do go against decision of officers, whichever way that is, sometimes it's a refusal and they go for it, sometimes it's something that's the other way around. And that is sometimes quite hard sometimes to take as, sometimes, as, well, we find it hard here sometimes, that Lewis or wherever, will 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 go against either way. And and in a way, it's it's sort of beyond us, because we said our part, and we're one of the constables there, and our information goes into there, into the, you know, the big report, which sometimes they're up to back thirty, forty pages, or there's some of the more complicated ones. So it is a little, it's a it's a bit, it can be a bit frustrating, we find it a bit frustrating here, but it's it's um, and obviously in your particular case, I can understand that as well. But I wish a formal complaint is is probably a bit strong, I think I I think I agree with the officer here, in in a sense of uh more of an observation, more reinforcing in this particular case that, you know, our own weight, how much does that really count, and all that sort of things, more the more the more the weight of what what a parish town council actually presents, so and obviously mention that particular policy as well, so, but it is it is tricky, very tricky, and councillors sometimes have to make some very big decisions. And they don't always necessarily get it right or wrong, so it's hard. Hope that helps, it's a
Councillor Borden.
Stolen one, all we can say. No, it's just, it's 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 a fair point, but you may, it's difficult to get, um this is the aspect of it actually, to have a part of the district council, obviously, there are
Yeah.
and we view it as local residents, and I saw the um where's that you do that, and obviously it's it's the way they want to write, you know, but also represent, and I would risk it that's key, very key to it, but the only benefit, if you like, is the fact that this is allowing more homes um for people who want to retire, that live to their life, and it adds up the chances they can stay in their hometown, and perhaps some way to get in some ways, not the ideal, but it's uh yeah, difficult to say, you know, how we approach this really, and have to discuss that a bit more detail before the or perhaps just draft that or be looking to just in the best of the moment, so that, Chair.
I think we're all agreeable that letters got scum.
Probably written, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, 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 read the letter, that's all.
Councillor Borden.
Um if I may be adult, yes, I I think that uh said me a letter expressing both the concerns of residents and the concern of the committee.
Okay.
And um indeed, well, I can um agree the exact form of the letter with the with the Chair, if you want to leave it like that, or so that Yeah. I'll have
Perhaps, and if if the uh president would like to write to the to us as a town council, and then we then forward that as a present, and Joel that time is that
I think the Mr. Proult has has written to us already, and so we've got an idea of his concern, so we can use those and add your, you know, your own views as well to the letter that goes to the district units.
Okay.
Hmm.
So then, um
Sure.
Can I have a show of hands of um
That's good.
us um uh writing a letter as had been stated? Okay.
Yep. One two, that's carried, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, going now to seven, and uh to note uh the contents of this report. Any questions on it?
I think we should note the contents of the book, thank you.
Thank you. We should, yeah. Noted?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That concludes the meeting at uh seven.